So that's Crystal Murch's post with the back of the townhomes must have been really making everyone nervous. I think they also have a townhome. They feel like they're... Let's do this. I think everyone has a townhome for a native home. Okay, Sharon, can you speak to that?
This is where I see you right here. She's on the public chat.
David Burton, are you ready, sir?
I was born ready.
Okay, good. All right. Calling to order the Pearland City Council meeting. It is May eighth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty P. M. Thank you for being here tonight. Haven't seen Dr. Roth in a bit, so it's good to see you. We are going to start with Janelle Zajak with a C is going to give us an opening thought and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, dear Father in heaven, as we bow our heads today, we are giving thanks for the assignment of a new Pope who is also a U. S. citizen and American, which should be really great for the rest of the world. Please let us, as a community and a council, make the best decisions for our city in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Short and sweet.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Janelle.
All right. I wanted to start this meeting just to recognize the passing of our dear friend Patty Vesely. She was a wonderful council member on City Council and an advocate for good, supporter of people and community, and a cheerleader for so many and all who knew her loved her.
When did she pass?
This morning.
Oh, I just visited her.
And I brought her notebook tonight because before she passed, when she was still doing better, Jerry wanted me to have her notebook. This was when she was on the pool committee. This is just her pool committee notebook. And so I brought it tonight, so she'd be here with us in spirit, and we just appreciate Patty and Jerry so much, all they've done to make Pearland better and love her, and she will be dearly missed. I also want to excuse Scott for a minute. I don't know how far behind he is. I just know that he said court went over and he was on his way. I'm not sure where Dan went. I hope he's okay, because he said he'd be right back, so we will see him, I'm sure, in a minute. Do we have, um, do I table things at this point, or do I wait till later? I can't remember. We're talking about conflicts with the agenda items. Is this when I table them? Okay.
No.
Do we have any conflicts or personal interest in any agenda items?
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
All right. So now is your time for public comment, and each of you will get three minutes, and we can start that public comment time now. All right, seeing no public comments, we will move to our consent agenda. These items are usually approved by one motion, are administrated by nature. We've heard a few corrections to the minutes.
What about the public hearing?
Oh, I skipped over it. Public hearing. So I know Dan was going to cue this up, so we'll do our best. This is the public hearing where we've been making adjustments and changes, because those changes have substantially affected the code. We do bring it back to a public hearing for the land use policies that are reflected in the city's vision called Rural Done Right. And that public, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Mayor, I may make a motion to move into the public hearing to hear, I guess, about key changes to the municipal code involving rural done right.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So, I mean Larry might want to help me with this, but Planning Commission, as they reviewed the code, one of the recommendations that came out of Planning Commission was to consider again R. in R. three to have condos and, or is it townhomes?
Townhomes.
Townhomes. And other than that, what other substantive changes were recommended or made? If not, we might have to just wait till Dan gets here. Here he is, on cue.
No problem. Yes.
Yeah.
You're good.
Okay, let's pretend I wasn't late. The reason we're having a second public hearing on this, there was a public hearing held in Planning Commission, was just that there was a fairly significant change that was made after the public hearing, and in light of Councilman Burton's concern on whether we had had sufficient public hearing on that, figured that we would just have a second public hearing. The major change from everything that the public had had was just that townhomes had been added back in after what had been discussed and what had been shared with the public. And so, and it came to my attention that we didn't have updated documents, so we wanted to give a chance, that's why I'm talking before the public hearing, to let the public know what that was. And I can, I can pull that up, but essentially, townhomes as a possible structure was added back in with the ability to have twenty-five hundred square foot lots for the individual townhome parcels, so.
That was three thousand.
Was it three thousand? I have it written down. Thought it was twenty-five, but could have been three.
Got a question there. If the townhomes will be more than a fourplex, be allowed?
Um, what was discussed was that no more than four sequentially could be built.
Through a building?
Yeah, so townhomes, as you know, have a common wall, so you could have no more than four of them with three common walls. But if the lot size is small, then I don't, I guess you'd have the side setback, whatever that is, and then you could have another set of four. The major difference in that is that what had been discussed and what had been proposed and available for the public was that the original version, you could do a fourplex, and it needed to have certain design characteristics, as you remember, to try to look more like a single-family residence. But you needed twenty thousand square feet for the four total, or five thousand square feet per unit. So, so this is a little bit of a deviation from that. Not a little bit. It was a significant enough of a deviation that the request was made that we have a second public hearing on that. Hang on, I'm just pulling this up right now.
So the duplexes and twin homes that are in the R. two, those are just two, two homes, right, to each?
Yeah, two residential units with a common wall.
And the, like, like the twin home, it can, it could be two-story, even looking like a, a townhome, right?
What's that?
The two...
Two stories, you could have two stories.
Two stories.
Depends on how you find out.
Because that really looks like a townhouse. It's just two in one place, one building.
Okay. Callie, I'm going to go ahead and pull it up on the screen. Okay, so the major change that was made after the public hearing was, we're in the R. three code here, zoning for R. three code, which was modified. We had it three family and four family dwellings of single ownership. It says any use permitted in the R. one and R. two zones, so that includes your single-family residences and your twin homes and duplexes. And then three-family, four-family dwelling of single ownership, and then what it used to say was triplex, fourplex, having separate ownership when approved through the subdivision process, the phrase or townhome dwellings. I think it was just or townhome was added. And, and it was added here as well, that it needed to have varied roof lines, articulated facades, and separated front entries. So the design characteristics weren't modified per se. We did take out the, the phrase to look like a single-family residence, so, but we did leave in varied roof lines, articulated facades, and separate front entries. And then the question that we had, the thing that we had a debate on just now, looks like Dave Harris, Councilman Harris was right, it was three thousand square feet. I think originally it was proposed at twenty-five hundred. That's why it sticks in my head, but, so three thousand square feet is the lot area for those townhomes, the minimum lot area. You can have more, but that's the minimum. So, I don't know if there's any other questions, but that was, that was the significant thing that was added back in. It also came to my attention by Councilman Harris, and I think we need to just make this change right now. This was an error in our old code, and it regards side yards. This is an R. one A. The intention being the side yard has total of twenty feet. You can go as small as eight on one side if you have twelve on the other. And the way it reads in our code down here, side yards, main buildings other than dwellings shall have a minimum side yard of eight feet, and the total of two side yards shall be twenty-four feet, which is in direct, well, it isn't in direct conflict with this up here, it just says the total of the two. I don't know if that was on purpose, because R. one, it's the total of it being twenty, so it seems to me like that should just be twenty and a two-zero. Does anybody have any problems with making that change?
No.
And then we can, um, we'll, public hearing will start in just a minute.
Okay, just had a question on your comment, but that's all.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's up to the mayor. I just say the public hearing hadn't opened yet, so.
Yeah, we did.
Three thousand acres.
We kind of did.
Three thousand.
Oh, you did.
Three thousand.
Yeah, we opened it.
I was out of the building, I apologize.
Yeah. Three thousand square feet, what is that in terms of acres?
Well, ten thousand square feet is a little smaller than a quarter of an acre. We typically call that a quarter acre, so therefore, five thousand square feet would be an eighth of an acre. So this is somewhere around a sixteenth of an acre.
It's really small.
Mm-hmm.
So, wanted to make that update. I don't believe that was there on purpose. Okay, that's the, that was the little preamble to why we had, why we're having a second public hearing on this, so. Let me get back down to R. three.
Good evening. I'm Larry Zajak, and I have a comment that's a bit tangential to this, but I think it may add value. It's come to my attention a number of times that it seems to be the practice of the city to announce a public hearing, and, and in a lot of cases, also a public meeting, in which case, the council deserves timely packets, and the public also deserves information to be available. So in the case of rural done right, the actual code is not yet available to review. So I'm not sure how, as a member of the public, you could be expected to come up and actually comment on this. Now granted, I've commented on it a number of times, but you know I'm a detailed guy. I don't know if anybody else is, but you like to see what it says in the end before you have to come to a vote or say, yeah, I agree with that.
I got to interrupt you there, Larry. We've, we had this code was available.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
I was out of town, and it says in the public notice that it's available online. It is not available online. Well, no, it's not. It is still not there.
Did you look at the public notice?
After five o'clock?
No, before five o'clock. It's down in the public.
I looked several places, was unable to locate that. We went to the state webpage, we clicked on Pearland webpage, unable to find it. If it's there, then say that's my mistake. Tell me again where we're going to find that going forward in the future, and we'll make that, you know, that would be easier. But I think the Planning and Zoning Commission, I believe the City Council deserves timely packets, and that should not be a day or two in advance. I think, you know, we're talking a week a minimum for, for the City Council, and probably two weeks for planning and zoning. So that, you know, what is really called for is some type of a reset, where we say, and we take an agenda and go, it's unreasonable to ask our volunteers and so on to consider these things. They all have, well, I don't know about all of them, some of, some of the folks are retired, and some of the folks have jobs, and they can't respond in, in a day or a half a day to, you know, complex documents that might be pages long and actually be able to do some research. Thank you.
Thank you.
Heather Pete. I'm so short. Callie, did you get both?
Yeah.
So, one of, I don't know if you need to put a timer on, just let me know when three minutes is up, and I can step aside. Um, the, rural done right, I've, to, to kind of shorten it, the summary is that we want to preserve our small town. We want to support families, and we want to strengthen local businesses. All three of those things, I think, are very tied into what we could offer as minimum square footage building in R. two and in R. three. Right now, can you go to the next screen? Right now, in R. two, we, unless something's changed, I did this a couple of weeks ago, so I apologize if numbers have changed, but Zone R. two, we are having a medium density, which is what it's been before, but proposing to reduce the lot size to seventy-five hundred square feet, which I think is fantastic. Less land, less cost. Current suggestion, I believe, is eight hundred and fifty square feet for a minimum home build. And just to say that with this change of eliminating townhomes, condos, and apartments, you're eliminating a huge wedge of housing opportunities. A lot of those people who live in those housing opportunities are also our employees. And so if we're also going to be trying to strengthen our local businesses, I think we need to be able to provide an entry level for people to get into single-family homes, if that's what we're going to be strongly encouraging. So with that, if we were to drop that minimum in R. two to seven hundred square feet, I just have some proposed things that could be now available for people. Could you go to the next slide? This here is seven hundred and forty-seven square feet, which is obviously lower than what is the proposed. It is a two-bedroom. This is a manufactured home that is built to HUD standards, that people could buy with a traditional mortgage, being able to buy cheaper land because it is smaller, and to be able to put a home on it to start. With all of these, I would just like to remind everybody about some of the rural traits, and that is starting small and expanding on it. You can get into a home, you can add on to a home, whether it's a stick build or else. Another one, you can just move, this one here, again, two bedrooms, one bath, entry level, manufactured home. These are homes, actually, this one in particular is Fleetwood Homes. We are going to have a seller here in town that could sell this home to a new person, new homeowner. That's not me, is it? No, I was...
It is you.
Oh, that's my time. Okay, then I will step aside. I was like, oh my gosh, that's my phone, I'm so embarrassed.
Sorry.
I will step aside for whoever's next. Oh, I'm sorry, do I not get a second chance to continue talking?
You do.
Oh, okay, okay.
Anybody else coming up to talk? Okay.
Same timeline?
So, anyway, seven hundred and fifty square feet. This here is a stick build. This is just a floor plan, just to show what that physically can look like. And yes, I know it is not for everybody, but it is a housing option that would fit into your parameters of it looking like a single-family home, and entry level for people to be able to get into the housing market. I don't know if that's the last one on that. Oh, here's another one. I mean, good god, that's adorable, screened in porch and everything. Okay, is that the end of R. two? Okay. R. three, I won't even push it. Oh, did you, I...
I didn't get R. two.
I just emailed it to you a little bit, a smidge ago. Anyway, same concept, okay? There are manufactured homes that are less, I think you're proposing seven hundred square feet, and of course, you know, I'm the crazy one who wants it really low, but whatever lower number you guys could feel content with, I'm just, the point is, is that I'm just trying to be able to get your kids to be able to stay. I don't have children, so that's not a concern for me. Is it a concern for my parents, who might have to move to Pearland and retire from South Carolina? Yeah. For your children to be able to get into something. If you're only going to be providing single-family homes, give them the opportunity. It may not be something that you want to live in, and it doesn't mean that every house in R. two and R. three is going to be that small. It just opens the door, and that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, with that, would like a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the Pearland City Municipal Code for Land Use Development of Rural Done Right.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, moving now into our consent agenda. So we have the minutes from April tenth and April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, and the work meeting minutes from April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. And then we have the approval of the warrant register for May eighth, twenty twenty-five, and the approval of the April financial statement from twenty twenty-five.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items five, six, and seven.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Items on the agenda this evening that need to be tabled, we did have the number eleven. Steve Decker is not going to be here this evening, so we need to table item eleven. And then Legacy B. Estates will not be here either, so we need to table item number thirteen. So I need a motion to table those two items.
I'll make a motion to table item eleven in action agenda and number thirteen in the work agenda.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Moving now to action item number eight, it's the discussion and possible approval of five thousand, of a five thousand dollar match for UDOT study of the South Interchange Frontage Road.
Callie, I'm going to go ahead and steal the screen, if that's okay. Many people have correctly wondered why there is a very, very odd no-left turn-in to the commercial subdivision that houses the Ballard Hotel and the Ace Hardware. That was not a city requirement, that was a UDOT requirement based on a traffic study that the commercial subdivision had to do. The concern was that there was potentially going to be stacking problem. I wish I had a better satellite image. This is the latest satellite image that's available on, on Google Maps. It is only, I can't remember how many feet, one hundred and fifty feet or something like that, back to the frontage road. The justification for UDOT saying no-left turn-in was that as there is commercial businesses here, it would only take, I believe they said, two semi-trucks to, to stack, turning left, to actually block the frontage road, this intersection, and, you know, five of them to back into the interchange. So that's why they, they had no-left turn-in, meaning that traffic has to go down to this new intersection down here, and come back around through the, it's a private drive from this point on, back in, so they have to come back in and around. The problem with that is that people don't see that as being an option, and so they just drive around, do an illegal U-turn and drive in, or hop the curb, something like that. Most people can look at that and say, it doesn't make a lot of sense. The commercial property owners there have been frustrated by that. Most, a lot of, I've heard of a lot of comments that people have said, you know, why did the city make them do that? Anyways, so as we have been looking spearheaded by the commercial properties there, is there some way to change that? And the only really way to change that is to change some of this alignment in this area. And there's an idea that has been proposed to essentially reroute the frontage road out around and have it come in and tie in directly across from that, and make this a, an intersection of sorts, and eliminate this, so you don't have all of these drives very close together. We talked with UDOT. UDOT has been to a meeting or two. I was at a meeting with the mayor this last week, and for the rural planning organization which, which deals with traffic issues, the mayor's on the executive committee, I'm on the advisory committee of that, and UDOT is, is there as well. Talked with UDOT about potentially looking at some design. This is a bigger picture than just, sorry, this is a bigger issue than just this one intersection. Sorry, every time I hover over this, it pops that up. The bigger issue is, is the interchange itself, and, and what sort of traffic problems are going to speed up the failing, that's the term that they use, of that interchange. UDOT is aware that it needs to be redesigned and rebuilt, and up to this point in time, they have always looked at it in terms of number of cars driving down Two Hundred South and getting on the freeway. They haven't looked at it in terms of all of the traffic that comes on and off of a freeway with, with commercial business there. And so they're recognizing that they need to look at this sooner rather than later. An interesting fact about this interchange is it was not originally built as an interchange. It was originally built as a, just a flyover, a way to get across It was originally built as a, just a flyover, a way to get across to the other side, um, for farmers and traffic heading out to the gap or whatnot. And later enter, um, onramps and offramps were added to that, that flyover. That's why this road is such, is so narrower, so much narrower compared to the north interchange. Short story is this, we have asked UDOT, um, if they will, um, s- speed up the process. Of course, everything starts with planning. Um, in talking with Chris Hall, um, he said that he, he has, there was some money that was dedicated to a, a planning, um, grant for a different project, which is not, that project is not going to happen over in Canab. He says, I do have money in this year's budget, um, if you guys want to put some money into looking at the, the overall design. It wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a full design, it would be a, like, thirty percent design to give us an idea of what, what's needed. The other reason that's important is, um, we're seeing commercial infill around the interchange. And if you're going to realign anything, the time to do it is while it's raw dirt, before you have buildings in the way and so forth. So UDOT recognizes that, that it's important, that they will, they will put money towards a grant. However, they won't do it without some local government match. They want to see that the local government has skin in the game. And their main reason why they require a, a, a match is that a lot of times they've put money into these things, they've spent the money on the engineering, and then the local government says, thanks, but no thanks, and throws the thing in the trash. Our, our idea is that if, if we can, um, if we can participate in this and the results of it, we can adopt into our transportation master plan, then when somebody comes in for a building permit and they want to build and encroach upon the interchange, we can say, you have to comply with this design, um, plan, which will, which will effectively protect the corridor as, for the new design. So now I've zoomed back out to the bigger picture and the purpose of the grant. The immediate payoff of doing this is that we would have a design that could work for this area right here as, as this area is the immediate problem that is, that we're facing. Um, this would not be necessarily something the city, I've al- I've already told the property owners all around there, the city doesn't have money to go realigning a road. But if you guys wanted to realign a road and, and wanted, you know, the, the city to act as a sponsor, to try to, um, you know, work with UDOT, and, and there's a lot of coordination that has to happen. I said, I'm sure the city would act as a sponsor to realign this and help out. Um, for one, we have utilities in the frontage road that would have to be realigned. Um, but we could put it on the corridor preservation planning group and help maybe contribute some funds towards corridor preservation acquisition if the property owners wanted to pay to realign that road. Um, anyways, so it's kind of, it's kind of out there, um, as, as that being a possibility. But in the short term, we would actually have a design over the interchange. And, um, we thought that that was, that was pretty worthwhile. Um, but we do need to allocate five thousand dollars if we want to, if we want them to do it, um, for our match.
Does this study include the entire interchange?
Yes. Yeah, because we, we know there's potentially some issues on the west side too, right?
Right. Can the property owners participate in this, or does it have to be just the city?
Has to be a city, local government match.
So even though it affects them and they're not happy with this current...
Yeah.
...alignment, they cannot help participate?
The, the bigger lift would be if, if they want this, they're going to have to pay to put it in.
Yeah, sure.
Which is a lot more than...
Oh, yeah, I...
Than us doing a match.
We get it.
But that's, this is just something that's developed. Um, the money is there now with UDOT, but we got to cough up some money if we want them to do it.
And it puts the whole project on an action plan, because right now, when we, we weren't flat footed, we talked to them, you know, two, three years ago about this interchange, and it was on a twenty year plan. And I just said, that's not soon enough. And so getting this money in place, getting this plan in place, getting this direction now, puts us, puts us, puts us where we need to be, you know, for things like other projects that fail or being able to move faster. I mean, my guess is it wouldn't even be ten years at this point, because, you know, the powers that be were in the room and they all very much recognized our concerns as being very valid. So this is an important step.
The first step to anything like this is planning. And you know how things work with UDOT? They take forever to do anything like this. If we can get a plan, a thirty percent design plan in place, we can bump it up on their priority list and really start asking for them to redesign this. It's narrow, there's no, pedestrians can't cross it.
Oh.
Um, it, it's going to be more and more of, you're going to hear, you know, questions of, when is this going to be fixed? When, what's going to happen? You'll get an accident or two, and then people really start demanding it. So this is about, you know, jumpstarting that process, I guess.
Well, like you said, it was never intended to be an interchange. And now, for a long time, it was fine. But now with the evolution and the building around there and development, that, it, it, it has to be, you know, upgraded. They, they use the term fail, so...
So we need a motion to commit the five thousand dollar match for the UDOT study of the South Interchange Frontage Road.
I'll make a motion to approve five thousand dollar match for UDOT, the study for the South Interchange Frontage.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. This next one is Dwight Hargett Property Trade. Um, we discussed the property trade last, last council meeting, so this is kind of an interesting request from that property owner. Um, his request is that we allow him to put a sign on his old lot to market the location of his new business. And we did tell him that we would bring it to council.
Like a billboard?
Mm-hmm. He wants to put a sign, a billboard, an offsite marketing sign on the property that...
I thought we don't allow billboards.
It would be, it would be an advertising sign.
It would meet our sign ordinance.
How big?
It's, it's just a request, and we said we would bring it to the council as a request.
I, I asked him, do you, do we need to hold the process if this is a demand on that trade? And he said, no, don't hold up the process, but it's just a request, because I won't have good frontage anymore and, and that property had great frontage, so I want to put a sign there. And I said, like, a permanent sign? And he said, yeah. I was like, I can't authorize that myself?
How large of a sign does he want to do?
He didn't say.
I don't see a problem with him doing a small sign, directing people.
I think it's weird, it's, it's not like he has a business there right now. Like, nobody knows it's there right now.
That's how I feel.
But this is also a situation he's going to be stuck in later. Like, eventually that road goes away. It's just trying to help him in the short term, so...
Well, I guess it would depend on how big and...
Yeah, don't we have a sign ordinance? I mean, there is.
Helping up the sign ordinance, certainly do.
And that, let's see, that...
Maybe that'll dictate...
No, that's beyond the historic district, so...
I don't love our sign ordinance. It just hasn't been high enough priority. Um, we are in the commercial zone, highway service zone. Gosh, it's, changes right there. Let me look, because, because that's...
Important.
It's important.
Let's see, it was highway service, and then we changed...
He's looking at that.
I know we changed the, that Reese property to residential from, it was highway service right there.
Okay, so it is red, which is highway service. It's this little parcel right here. So this doesn't show different zones, it just mentions highway service once or twice. So what this says is an advertising sign. A business sign is something that a business puts up on its own property, advertising the business on that property. An, an advertising sign, this is the way we've interpreted it. An advertising sign is where you're advertising for something off, off, um, on a different parcel. We do have a, a definition of billboard, we can look at that. I don't know if this reaches that definition. So we have maximum size in feet, a maximum height, and then it says permitted use. And then it has general commercial, and then it says conditional use, highway service. I believe that means that if you want to do advertising for offsite business, it's a conditional use. It's the way we've interpreted that. You have to have indirect illumination. So like I said, we do want to look at our, um, at our sign ordinance at some point, but that answers your question.
So this advertisement won't be on his property?
Billboard says, "A large outdoor advertising structure found alongside high-traffic areas such as busy roads, highways, or interstates." It is on a highway. "And which provides for the offsite, for offsite advertisement. For the purposes of this chapter, a billboard defines as larger than fifty square feet." And we did outlaw, outlaw, sorry, that was a bit extreme of a term. We did ban new billboards, if you remember. So I would think that, as long as it's less than fifty square feet, it wouldn't be a billboard. But it would need a conditional use permit, since it's an advertising sign in H one, HS one.
Could you go back to that other table?
Yeah, what was the square feet on that?
Eight by twelve.
Ninety-six.
Eight by twelve.
Hundred.
Eighteen feet high.
That's eight, that's ninety-six square feet. Isn't it? Wait a minute.
Hundred and sixty.
Does that say eight by twelve? So that's ninety-six square feet, isn't it?
Yeah.
Correct.
And the billboard says fifty.
Yeah. Yeah, th- that's fine. Bigger than fifty is a billboard, smaller than fifty isn't. But you can have an advertising sign of up to ninety-six square feet.
That doesn't make sense.
It does make sense. They're not mutually exclusive. You can have an advertising sign that isn't a billboard, and you can have an advertising sign that is a billboard. If you have an advertising sign that isn't in an area that makes it a billboard, then it could be larger than fifty. Does that make sense?
Two separate, two separate things.
Yeah. What makes it a billboard is where it is located, and it's an advertising sign, and it's larger than fifty square feet. So you could technically have an advertising sign that's larger than fifty square feet that isn't a billboard, because it's not along a busy public road.
I think that kind of contradicts what the intent was.
Which is a side issue.
Yeah.
Um, so again, i- if, according to this, if you wanted to permit it, the question is, is how long? Are you going to give him an easement? If it's permanent, if it's a temporary thing, then how long is that temporary? You know, for a year while he gets his business up and running? Is it permanent? Where is it going to be located? What's the size? That's just, it was a request.
And how many other doors is this going to open for other businesses? Just thinking out loud. Are we going to have other requests? I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there.
Does anyone have a strong enough opinion to make a motion?
I almost want to know, like, how long he's thinking? Like, permanently keeping it there? Or does he want it there for, like, a year?
He didn't, I, I got the feeling he meant, put it there and leave it there. He didn't ask for, he didn't say temporary or anything like that.
But couldn't we give him a time limit?
You guys could.
Yeah.
I mean, you can say anything from permanent to nothing, and we'll still move forward with the transaction. It's a, just a request.
What's his business?
He is doing a gym, a karate gym, taekwondo gym, on Three Hundred East. Three Hundred East doesn't have the same, I mean, his, his, his point is valid, it doesn't have the same, you know, viewership, opposed to me.
Well, I get that, but then that, if, if we, we didn't know what type of business. If it was a cer- certain business, then that would make a difference.
I think if you're going to do permanent, if you want to do permanent, we need to get down to, we need to put some constraints on that. Where is it going to be? How big is it going to be? It'd have to be less than fifty. And does that run with the land? Does it, you know what I'm saying? I mean, if it's going to be permanent, there's a lot more that we got to look at. If it's going to be temporary, I don't know if there is. But it still wouldn't be more than fifty feet, because that would be a billboard, and that's not allowed.
And if we don't do it, is that going to hinder with what we, with our opposition?
No, he, he said, he said, in fact, because I said, I, I, I got to pause everything if this is a, is a deal breaker. And he said, it's not a deal breaker, it's just a request.
Okay.
I think until we review, get more details, that we can approve this. I mean, we got to have more details.
Specifically, you want timeline, timeline? What, what, what details do you want?
Well...
Assuming that's the motion.
Do you know what property he, he wants us? The reason why I'm asking this, because there's a business that I got a earful, because he wanted to put up a billboard, and billboard passed. Di- you know, so he's restricted for advertising except on his building. So that's the only reason, because if we grant it for him, we, we should go back to this other company and offer it to them. Like, it could open a can of worms, that's all I'm saying. Because we don't even know where he wants to put the sign. He said he, he doesn't want to put it on his property. Does he know where, has he told you where he wants to put his sign?
He has not.
Okay, we probably should table it until he should come here.
Somewhere in that cer- triangle.
I move to table item nine until we receive...
So would it, should we just invite him here and have a discussion?
Let's, let's do, so then we can just hear it straight from him.
I like that better than trying to figure out what you're looking for.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Let's have him come, because I'd like to...
So table it until he can come and address us?
Okay, so we have him...
So I move to table it until he's able to come and address the council and inform us as to exactly what his intentions are.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Now we are going to approving Steve Decker to serve on the Historic Preservation Committee. Um, I had...
Mayor, go ahead.
I had a couple different people want to fill the spot that, uh, Toni Robinson is leaving, because she is taking a job in Cedar and won't be available to work with us in, on that committee anymore. And, um, in interviewing these candidates, Steve Decker is one that can meet during the day, which is important to the committee that meets during the day. And also, he is our city historian, he and Sandra Benson have held that position for quite some time. So I can't actually imagine a better person to serve on Historic Preservation Committee. So with that, I'm bringing him to the council for your approval.
Okay, I, you answered my question, so I'll move to approve Steve Decker to serve on the Historic Preservation Committee. My question is, is he flexible to meet?
Yes.
You answered that, so...
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. If you all wonder why I say any opposed, it's because my dear husband said you always have to say any opposed. Even if I hear everyone's voice, I hope it doesn't annoy you, it is because, um, I listen to him sometimes. So anyway, we skipped number eleven, we tabled that, because Steve was not available this evening to come and present his, uh, art program report for the year and make his budget request for fiscal year twenty six. So now we're moving on to our work agenda. Item number twelve is a discussion on Rural Done Right Language and the direction for the final ordinance. This is on our agenda, because we're still trying to craft these, this ordinance, which will affect other aspects of our code, and we just, our city manager needs direction on this, and so we're bringing it for discussion tonight.
Okay, Mayor, well, I just, I didn't feel it was appropriate to do any, or address the body in the public hearing, but I just want to say, I have received numerous calls, emails, letters, whatever, and people that just tell us they don't want townhomes, and they refer to those on Six Hundred.
Four Hundred.
Four Hundred, Four Hundred, yeah. Yeah, so there's a lot, I'm just saying, there's a lot of people that, they're not here, they don't like coming to city council and addressing the council, but there's been a lot of people that's expressed that, and, and I have to agree in the fact that Rural Done Right addresses the ability, or, we, we went through there and addressed affordable housing issues with the town, with, um, duplexes, Commonwealth duplexes having, uh, separate ownership, reduced lot sizes, impact fee reductions, uh, you know, there, there was a lot, a lot of sizes of the, of structures and things. And so I think it's all, it's, it's redundant. I think we have a... And so I think it's all, it's, it's redundant. I think we have addressed it, and if we take, if we add that back in, I feel we're, um, compromising the integrity of what the original intent was of Rural Done Right. Because we're accomplishing those needs. 'Cause I understand those needs, but I also understand the integrity of a community and the character of a community, and that's what we are trying to accomplish. And I don't think we're discriminating, because what's to stop, they say four, what's to stop a series of four? What's to stop them from getting, of springing up anywhere? You've been to Beaver? Seen that one on the north side? It rises up out of the ground like a sore thumb on that north interchange. And I don't, it just, I don't think it fits here. And so, with all, I mean, I wish the people had come, but they haven't expressed it, and I think their voices need to be recognized and heard, that there's, I mean, it, I've, I've had a lot of people that are very upset about those on, what is it, four hundred, four hundred and more.
Can I read something if you're done? I think how we came up with Rural Done Right is from, from public comment. And I just like how it said, "Our commitment to Perwin's future. We believe in a balanced approach to growth that protects our rural character while allowing for some reasonable and responsible development in guiding principles." And our guiding principles were, and this is kinda like, what led the council to propose, like, how we wanted planning and zoning to kinda look at it, is keeping Perwin rural, um, preserving our historic character. And it has been mentioned to me, and I can only speak for just me, that townhomes are not a rural character for Perwin. They keep telling me, that, um, I keep hearing, "If we just let all of these pop up, we're gonna turn into Cedar City. We're just going to take all of the historic and the charm out of Perwin." I mean, tho- that's just what I hear, okay? Slow managed growth was another commitment that we made profoundly pro-business, pro heritage. And I, I strongly believe, like, there are people on both sides. People like the townhomes for what it brings and what it offers to potential people. And I also have to hear about what the other residents are saying as well, as, um, "They look like military barracks. They look like inner city pro- inner city projects. It looks like a jail. Um, I don't want this type of housing built in Perwin." I mean, that's what I'm hearing, but I'm also hearing the other side of it as well, so trying to, I just don't like it when I, when we bring things to the public and they say, it, our voices don't, our voices, our opinions don't matter because they're not gonna listen to us anyway. Like, kinda hurts my heart that they feel, but, like that, but that's government in general. I mean, it's, it's government. And I get where they get that from, but I was elected to be a representation of the community as Perwin as a whole, and I know we all don't think the same, and so I feel like it's a very fine line that we walk in hearing what the people of Perwin want. I have heard more negative than I have, have heard positive. And that's just me, that's just me. So.
Well, that's the same with me.
That's all we have to
So.
contribute at the moment.
Councilmember Downey, do you have anything to add to that? Have you been hearing, 'cause I know we all talk to a lot of people.
We've talked, and I understand that. The, the only thing with the R three, it's more affordable for the kids that are, are gonna be hoping, hopefully staying here. But it's, that's not an, a deal breaker for me. But I think, I think we need to look at affordable housing. We want, we want our kids, the kids wanna stay here. We have to have, we have to have jobs, we have to have housing, affordable housing.
And I, I mean, Heather Pete shared the workforce housing is a huge concern. I mean, we talk about our kids, but workforce housing, um, especially with our industrial manufacturing, job creation, things like that that are positives for our economy. We also have to be sure we have a balance with workforce housing. So, I mean, that's always in my mind as well.
Mayor, can I just make one point? Uh, we still allow R three. It, this isn't, this allowing R three townhomes. It's just that, R three's still allowed, and we need to have discretion where R three is used. But, you know, so these are two different things.
Councilmember Dean, you look like you're about to speak. Let me give you that opportunity.
I'm, I'm almost there.
Are you almost there?
I'm not a builder, but, so, can you explain again the difference between a four, four townhomes stuck together and a fourplex?
Yep.
Call Sessi.
It's, it, it, it's a, it's a good, it's a very good question. Um, what is the difference? The way this code is written, the difference is, is nuanced, but it, but it is significant. Um, essentially, the math of the square footage of the lots, this is where this comes from. You can build a twin home in ten thousand square feet with a common wall. If you do it through the subdivision process, which is the only way you can split to two parcels, you have five thousand on one, five thousand on the other. That same math was taken towards R three. So, it is a density question, first of all, because right now, in our R three code, you're required to have eleven thousand square feet for the first, sorry, not eleven, ten thousand square feet for a single-family residence in R three. And then one thousand square feet for each additional residence. So, if you have townhomes that are under common ownership, if you had twenty thousand square feet, you could put nineteen of them together, until you reach the density restriction, which, it's never mentioned in R three what density restriction is. Density restriction is me- mentioned in our Planned Unit Development Code, where it restricts them to nine units per, um, per acre.
Acre.
But if they want to do an apartment building or condos, you're, you're gonna get higher density per acre typically.
So townhomes are, can be owned by one property owner?
Yes. They can be owned by one property owner, or if you go through the P U D process, you can have an HOA, and you can have what we typically think of as condos.
And the townhomes are individually, individually owned?
E- either they're under one ownership, or if you go through the P U D process, you can split them into separate ownership. That's all in the existing code.
So if you wanna save money for, have our, our kids, grandkids, whatever, w- shouldn't we restrict it to ownership of that individual? Instead of having a fourplex, ten fourplexes, like, units on four hundred, owned by one person, and renting them out, what's gonna stop this from just having someone, like, the, the new annexation that might be coming in with fifty-one acres with a whole bunch of R three along the freeway? Just building, have individual lots in R two, but the whole back section would be one owner?
You can achieve single own, or individual ownership under the current code.
But couldn't you, if you, if you did allow them, couldn't we, 'cause you, you don't want barracks. I don't wanna see barracks. I don't wanna see apartments either. But couldn't you limit to how many units were in per building?
And that's what, that's what it is limited to, but primarily, this is a density discussion? It's slightly a design discussion, but it's mostly a density discussion.
And?
'Cause in the Rural Done Right, and I never finished explaining this to answer your question, John. In Rural Done Right, you need effectively almost a half acre for those four, that fourplex. It's supposed to look similar to a single-family house. And I had one developer say, "Yeah, but I can, I can build townhomes that have varied roof lines, articulated facades, separated front entrances, and things like that." And what's the difference between that and a townhome? And I said, "It's minute, but we're, we're gonna say, we're gonna want you to try to make it look more like a single-family home," right? There's ways of, of doing that, but, but ultimately, it is more a density discussion. So instead of whatever you can cram into R three right now with townhomes, it will be a little bit more spread out. It will be a similar density to R two. Actually, it'll be the identical dens- density to the new R two, because it's five thousand square feet per lot.
And like I say, the pictures, pictures that I sent to you, and I had one of Larry's pictures too, those are nice-looking townhomes.
So you would need two acres to do four sets of four. You would have to purchase four acres. So they, if you were, you following the rule of four?
Twenty thousand square feet per fourplex under the new, the way it was, not the way it is in front of you. So there's forty-three thousand square feet and change, five sixty, I think, in an acre. So you could do two of those inside, you know, so that's eight. So it's, it's, it's fairly similar to density now, um, under the, uh, proposal in front of you, you're looking at, well, it would just be limited to three thousand square feet.
So, in planning and zoning this week, they mentioned-
And your math there, sorry? I will, and I will finish talking.
No, no.
What's forty-three thousand divided by six? Anybody? Quick?
Hey, Dan, could you draw-
Seven.
I think, not to speak for Councilman Dean, but I have the same question, and I haven't had an opportunity to look into it. But the question, I think, is two-sided. One, how many units and what they're gonna look like on a particular lot? But the second question is, can government restrict and place conditions on ownership of a development? So if a developer comes in, he owns the land, he complies with the ordinance, he's building pursuant to code, different, you know, uh, even the, the, uh, plan, the preset plans we've talked about, I think, have met constitutional muster. But the question is, um, if I'm a developer, can you tell me, I can't own, I can't build pursuant to code, and I can't own them? Uh, or you can tell me how many I can own, or what I can't own? I think that's the question. We just approved, uh, a, uh, with a subdivision, frankly, a Planned Unit Development Manufactured Homes with, I think, I don't know, eighty units on fifteen acres? And, and the people don't own the land. So, we allowed that developer to own all the land. Can we then turn around and put conditions on, uh, developer John Dean, who wants to put in, per code, eighty units, uh, along the freeway?
What is the question?
Huh?
What's the question?
The question is, can we do that? Can the city do that?
Yeah. We say in an R one, you can only build single-family houses.
Okay, but what, in an R three, or an R two?
Yeah. No, we can restrict building types and
No, no, I know all that, but ownership. My question is ownership. I think that's what he was alluding to.
Um, yes. It, we have always, um, how do you have a, a single parcel owned by two people? Two separate parties. Uh, so in, in the past, we've allowed a duplex to be on, sorry, in R two right now, you can do a single-family residence on ten thousand. Ten thousand is the number for ev- for a single-family residence across all zones. But in order to do a duplex, you have to go to thirteen thousand feet, sorry, square feet. But that's a single parcel, not under multi-ownership. We have never allowed a common wall because we have to have setbacks between the buildings. We've never allowed this concept of a twin home even. The only thing that we've allowed is when you get into the P U D or condominium space, common walls. Um, and you can see, we have some, some, some of that stuff that's, that's occurred, condominiums and things like that. So we can say, in this zone, you can build a multifamily, and you can either have it in common ownership, or you can divide it, but you have to go through a process to subdivide those parcels into legal, and
Right.
And, and they have to go through that, that process. So that's all we're saying is now, you, we can allow a duplex to be owned and to be segregated and owned. Before, you couldn't do it. It was just a duplex that you had to own the whole building.
Okay. So, can I be the owner of all those and then lease them?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm get- I mean, that's would be the-
Which, the townhomes that we've talked about a little bit, out there on four hundred, that's exactly the case. It's just one large parcel.
Owned by one company, yeah.
With, with four buildings of six townhomes.
Uh, they're all rentals.
And they're all long-term rentals.
They're all rentals, yeah. I think that would be the business model, wouldn't it?
Um, a, a lot of these townhomes are, are sold.
Okay.
And you'd be shocked at what they sell for.
Mm-hmm.
As much as a house.
They're as much as what a nice house used to cost.
So using examples, we know, the con- the fourplexes across from Lion's Park, are those dis- divided in each one? And then using another example, we know, Shinglebrook, those are divided and each one is separately owned.
Yep, and that-
So what, I mean, like, use examples we know, 'cause I think that helps.
Yep. The, both of those are, are great examples, and we typically call those condominiums. And, and you can have separate ownership on the second floor than you do on the first floor, and that goes through that process. Um, we require, you know, um, an HOA or some sort of a, of an entity that is gonna govern common spaces and, and all of that stuff.
And Shinglebrook has an HOA, the, uh, fourplexes have an HOA, um, Foothills has an HOA.
But we've never allowed that in on R one or in R two. And so, in, in R three, we have allowed that, and we would allow it today with townhomes under the existing code. It's just under the new code. No townhomes. We're removing that word, and we're, we're saying your multifamily units can get up to a four multifamily unit. Whether it's single ownership or common ownership.
That was my question.
Yep. We'll allow either.
And then the fourplexes over by the highway, those are all common ownership? Or are those each fourplex owned by a different owner?
Which hi- which highway? Oh.
Yeah, over here.
Out there on Main Street?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. I'll look it up.
Does anyone know?
I can tell you, it's the second-
Four buildings, those, I, I believe four different, I know there's one, you know, by somebody different. I don't know if they only have the three. But one person owns the building. It's Jennifer who works for me with her.
Okay. Which ones are those?
Yeah, I think they're-
He's gonna pull them up.
Yeah, I think they're all four separate owners, because I rented there a really long time ago, one guy, and then I actually have a relative that owns one of the other ones.
Th- this is a really great, I, I think a picture t- tells a thousand words.
Yeah.
And if you look at these, um, you look at these, um, condos here, um, the ones that you were asking about, Mayor? Um, you see how they've, how they've segregated each building as its own building? Um, hmm. I don't know who, I don't know who Rufus Noah is. It looks like the, each building is owned by an individual person, and then they must be renting out. So it's, so, so this, th- the parcel viewer is not a great example of, of showing what that is. Oh, it says one of twelve, yep. There you go. One of twelve, two of twelve, three of twelve, four of twelve. Okay, so, and that's, and that's how that, that's how that works. So the question you asked about out here, these, um, units here? It is a single ownership. Wayne Peterson owns that building.
Councilmember Harris, we haven't heard from you. And, I mean, some of the things I've just researched, because I like to talk about things we're familiar with, because we already do it here. We already do it here. So one of the ones was the GUR subdivision is six units per acre. Foothills is between twenty-three and twenty-four units per acre. So these are areas we can reference and say, "We already do that. This isn't new for Perwin." In the rural model, we already do these things. So it's just something to consider, you know, moving forward, the way we wanna shape future growth. But we don't have to be- But we don't have to be narrow in that we, you know, don't do that here, we do that here. The other one I thought was interesting is the cottage concept, the one across from the high school. Now, it's single ownership, but it is a cottage courtyard-
Type model.
Type model. So the only difference would be in the cottage courtyard is you'd have parcel lines.
Yep. You could have individual ownership of those homes.
But still have common space that's shared. So we have a lot of great examples of a lot of options.
Are you talking about the cottage courtyard, whatever?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's in Rural Done Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. She should say, she should give any-
I'm just saying, we have familiarity with some of these concepts already that have been here.
We have one across from the high school, right there.
It's in Rural Done Right, yeah, sure.
I'm wondering if there's any other, um, discussion. Obviously, the council, this was a little unique, where the council, this originated with the council, and then went to Planning Commission. Um, after Planning Commission got done with it, I think it was the next day, I sent out a clean version to the council to review. Um, actually, I sent the dirty version that had all the changes.
I like the dirty version.
And I sent the clean version. I, you know, I can pull up that dirty version that shows all the changes. But I'm just wondering if there's any other, other than the town homes, if there's any other thoughts or discussion or anything like that. We did make a few, um, other alterations. Um, created a separate downtown commercial zone from a commercial zone, a general commercial, um, which, we talked about that before we sent it to them. Um, there's no, that doesn't go into a place until we actually amend the zoning map and assign something to that zone, but that was, that was some, we did a lot of work on that.
Well, didn't they reduce the lot size and they reduced the structure size, too?
Yeah, we can look and see what the changes were, if you'd like. I don't remember them all off the top of my head.
From the original Rural Done Right-
Yeah.
-concept.
I wanna ask you about the side yards, though.
Okay.
Side yards, eight and twelve. Why can't they be ten and ten? If the minimum size is eight, to total up to-
Oh, they can be ten and ten.
Because in the past, I've always been told, you can't do that.
No, no, no. They can absolutely be ten and ten.
That's good.
You just can't have any one smaller than eight-
Okay.
Without the other ones being twelve.
Like, just the way you're reading, like, that should be able to go ten and ten.
Yeah, no, we allow them to go ten and ten all the time.
That's good. Because that's not what I was told in the past.
I don't know, this one looks pretty clean. Is this the dirty one or the clean one? Okay. You have the dirty one.
And I can pull up that dirty one, if you'd like. We gotta stop calling it the dirty one. I don't, it just sounds, it just sounds weird. Yes. And it is messy, and sometimes it's easy to get lost in what's happened, what's going on and what's happening with the way the formatting works.
The pure that's been infiltrated.
Yep. We did add in, um, manufactured subdivision as a conditional use, which was consistent with what we talked about. We just added that in. Um, I'm trying to think if there was anything else significant that the Planning Commission changed. When you went through the non-clean version, Rochelle, did you find anything that you had questions about?
I don't know why my thing went off. No, I didn't see anything that stood out.
We reviewed, we returned, removed the words, um, heights to avoid a boxy look. That was, that was our Planning Commission Chair, Jamie, really didn't like that. And it was true, it was kind of, it was kind of vague language, so we just left. Buried roof lines require multiple pitches. Um, we added I A D U's and E A D U's.
That's what I was just gonna say, I liked that.
Which, we just didn't have it, and it's cleaner to put them in, in the actual zones. That was always available, or always legal. Um, we had a pretty good discussion on square footage of buildings. Went back and forth a bunch of times on that, and settled out with what you see duplexes. If it's a twin home, seven hundred and fifty square feet on each side of the common wall. If it's a single family dwelling, eight hundred and fifty feet in the R two. And then in R three, it went down a little smaller. Six hundred and fifty. Seven hundred and fifty for a single family home, which Heather showed some pictures of what some of that could look like, and six hundred and fifty on either side of the common wall. So both of those dropped a little bit in R three, so you could have a little smaller. Which makes sense, because you have smaller lots, possible. Um, I think one of the things that, and it's, I think this is pretty obvious, everybody has focused on whether to get rid of or not the town homes. And some of the criticism of getting rid of town homes is getting rid of the ability to have affordable housing. And they've skipped over the fact that we're allowing smaller lots by right. Um, that's always been something you only achieved through a planned unit development. Um, we would really like to see some starter homes built, some single family starter homes built, which could be affordable. I hope that with this in our code, developers will take the opportunity. I think the demand is there. Most builders, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, wanna build a bigger house, because that's where the profit margin is. Most builders are not building small starter homes. Um, this will encourage some small starter homes to be built, hopefully.
To Councilmember Harris's point, though, on the side yard, could we put, or ten feet by ten feet? Something, just for clarification.
Well, this is the way it reads in R one, um-
I just can see how that could be confused and someone not understand. Because I was told similar things as well.
Main buildings shall, oh, here it says twenty, oh wait, no. That's because I fixed it on the other side. Uh, we're in R one A. R one A, it says it a little weird. Um, yeah, we can change it if you want.
Whatever would be easy to-
And the total of two side yards shall be twenty. Main buildings shall have a minimum side yard of eight, and the total of two shall be twenty. That's the way it says it in R one.
Okay.
So it doesn't say eight and twelve, it just says, you can go as low as eight, but the total has to be twenty, so. But we could certainly modify R one A to say it the same.
Just keep it consistent.
Yeah, I like that.
So this might come up at a later date, but, because you've got the magic fingers over there. Can you tell me what the minimum pitch is for a roof in a code?
So the only time our code talks about it is in relation to manufactured homes. Outside of that, it's controlled by building code.
And what is it with manufactured homes?
I don't know. I could ask our county building department, which does our building stuff. It depends on the snow load requirements for the area. Um, in our manufactured home code, we actually say that it is restricted to, the pitch of the home's roof has a minimum vertical rise of four feet for each twelve feet of horizontal run. Um, and that's specifically in manufactured homes. Because I think it'd be easy, it's one thing to build a house, and the local contractors know they have to meet local building code. It's another thing to buy a house that's built who knows where and bring it in. So that's why they make sure they call it out in manufactured homes.
Is this what you're just showing right now? Is this for manufactured homes or regular homes?
This is in, this is for manufactured homes.
Oh, okay.
And this is, these number one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight? Sorry. One through seven? Um, or one through six are all regulating what a manufactured home can do in that R one. And then we point R two back to it, and we point R three back to it, when it comes to building a single family home or a manufactured home, so. Does that make sense?
Fleetwood's about three and a half.
What's that?
The Fleetwood's like three and a half.
Wait, I'm gonna change this on the clean one. I wanna make tonight's changes on the clean one. Even if you wanna revert back, I gotta have a way of keeping things straight.
I might have it right here. That's why I brought my own computer tonight.
I love it.
So to kind of just resolve this item, I mean, there might be a lot of things to still talk about. Um, I'm personally, because I couldn't answer for any of you, curious to the council's attitude, appetite for the integration of town homes.
I don't want them in there. I wanna take town homes out.
I don't think they fit the character of the community. We cover it in other ways in the Rural Done Right, as far as affordable housing and duplexes and three and fourplexes and different things. And as far as lot size reduction, like I've said, we've addressed it. It isn't like we've ignored it. We've addressed it. And so I think this is redundant, and I think it takes away from what the intention was.
I feel it needs to be in.
Do you wanna lean in, hear microphone?
I said, I feel like it needs to be in.
Okay.
I'd like to do a little bit more homework, if possible, to, uh, see what's working in other communities and what's not.
I don't care if they're there, so. We have them, it's not like we're changing the town by putting some more in, so. And if we can keep affordability better, so be it.
And I feel like it would be fine if we were spacing them out around town, but lining them all up along the freeway? I don't know. I don't like the idea, but.
So in terms of direction on this document, um, I guess that would be the most important thing to me, for you to be able to move forward on this, Dan. What all do you need clarification on, or even just, you know, a direction? I'm not saying, we're not voting on this or anything.
Well, I'll tell you what we could do. Um, we have, obviously, it's just a work meeting. Um, and the reason was, I didn't wanna go to all the purpose of writing up the ordinance itself without, um, this is big. Working on it a little bit would be good, clarifying this point is big, because it looks different. If this is the only thing that there's a difference really of opinion, we could do one of two things. We can bring it back and talk about it again next time, give you some chance to do some research on it. Two, I could write two ordinances, one with them in, one with them out. And then we could have further discussion next week and vote A or B, option A or B. We could do either or. To Rochelle's point, and I think this is really valid, um, most of the infill that has not filled in yet of Parowan, between here and the freeway at least, is this, um, if that annexation is approved, um, that is on our doorstep with, I'm gonna call it the right thing, Prime West Development.
Mm-hmm.
I have been using the owner of Prime West's personal name, but, um, that subdivision or that annexation is, as, um, Councilwoman Topham said, it is on our flume, our general plans, future land use map, as R three against the freeway, and then R two out here. Um, so the entire annexation is a mixture of R two and R three. And then there's an area right here, which is not annexed in yet, but it is all R three, that will annex in. So whatever we do is what we're gonna see, the next development really that'll probably occur in any sort of numbers in the city. So, you know, it's pretty significant, um, not to turn up the pressure, you guys know that there's pressure, but it is coming at us really quickly. We are in the middle of approving or not approving that annexation. We are doing it right now.
Mm-hmm.
And we only have a certain amount of time that we can hold the, a new subdivision application that would be affected by Rural Done Right. Six months from when we started this process, which I haven't been counting, but I bet you that was three months ago.
It was in February.
February?
February.
Two and a half months ago. Um, so, you know, we gotta, we gotta do something. And it will be what we will see development happen near the freeway. And that's why they put that stuff near the freeway, but it's also what people see as they drive by, so.
Can you, can you put something in the ordinance if you did allow R three? That they're not like rows of apartments and the design?
Um, I think that we could, we could do something creatively with spacing.
Yeah.
I mean, there's certain ways to do the architecture of it that will pass muster. And you could do setbacks, you could have only so many of them together before there has to be setbacks, or something like that. I don't, I don't know. We could explore it.
I mean, I don't want rows of apartments and barracks and all that either, I don't.
Neither do I.
But I think we need to have it, but we can, like you say, be creative in allowing it.
You're welcome to come up, if you'd like. I just wanted to ask a question about the small lot idea, which I think is great. But in Parowan, it's always been that you can put a manufactured home next to a palatial stick-built home, as long as it's on a quarter acre lot? Is that right?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so when you have your tiny, tiny little lot and your palatial tiny stick-built home, um, are you gonna like hundreds of tiny little mobile homes, or manufactured homes, being next to you? Just kind of a question to think about, council people. Since you have opinions about town homes, I think you might have opinions about manufactured homes on tiny lots also, that are just in the general area and not in a P U D. Just a little food for thought.
So one thing to point out there, because we did, we did talk about addressing manufactured homes, and the way it sits as of right now is anywhere in town, in any residential zone, you can put a manufactured home. As long as you do those items one through six, we treat it like a conventional house, and you could put it anywhere. We did, in this Rural Done Right, if you do a subdivision, and it's more than eighty percent manufactured homes, then it has to go through a conditional use process with Planning Commission, and there's some additional restrictions. But if it's a standard subdivision, and they sell, they say, "We're selling lots", people can do what they want as far as the houses they put, um, on there, as long as they're not gonna be more of an exclusive manufactured home subdivision. And if they are, what it says is they essentially have to break up the design and the characteristics, offer different models and different, so it's not, we had a lot of talk about the word cookie cutter, but so it's not just cookie cutter homes exactly in a row, it's cram them in there. But that answers that question. That's where it sits as of right now, related to manufactured homes.
Is there anything else in Rural Done Right, other than the town home piece, that we wanna continue to discuss and work through? Just so that, you know, before we come back to the next meeting, we have everything, or it doesn't have to be everything, but some more things to consider, because it's like, we could clearly do this for, you said, six months?
Yeah.
So we could do it for-
We can put a moratorium on something, because we're working on code for six months, and then you gotta take it off. If you haven't changed the code, it reverts back to what it was.
And you don't have to answer that tonight, but it would be good to really look through this and see if there's anything else that just jumps out at you, that you feel like you wanna talk about, or adjust, or massage, or whatever. I mean, we've learned through code that little words mean a lot.
They do. And I'm happy to, you guys know I'm busy, but I'm happy to sit down, talk- They do. And I'm happy to, you guys know I'm busy, but I'm happy to sit down, talk through the math, layouts, concepts.
And I liked what Councilmember Topham said. I mean, this was a result of the community feedback and, and really concern and recognizing that we could either be looking in the rearview mirror and saying, "What happened to us?" Or we could get in front of it and do some things now and, you know, this isn't the be all, end all, we don't ever touch it again, just like any other code. It's a living document. But this is, you know, generally for a first stab. I think we've done a lot of good work here through Planning Commission and through City Council, so, you know, this is a work in progress. But none of us woke up one day and said, "Hey, let's do this. This would be a fun project." This was a community demand project and really from, I think, where we all sit, the last thing we want to be, and I don't want to call out any particular towns 'cause I think that's rude, but like, how did they let that happen? You know, we just don't want to be that town. Did you have something, Heather? I didn't know if you were posturing, just... Oh, you're, are you gonna come up? You can.
I guess this should be directed to Scott if he could answer. Um, I don't, I think we can, what, what makes Parowan in the rural so great is the fact that you have different sized homes and, um, building size and building types next to each other. Um, and I don't know if it's, obviously, this would be, I don't know if anybody's ever done this before, but if you were to take a block section, instead of having zone one or R one, R two, R three, you create a block section, whatever you determine, and a certain percentage has to be R one, R two, or R three, that kind of thing, so that that way you're not building all a strip of townhomes, which is what isn't Parowan. But it's not to say that a townhome of four townhomes next to a McMansion, next to a, you know, Pioneer Home or smaller home.
Excuse me, could you, um, explain what a McMansion is? I don't know. I know McDonald's, but what's a McMansion?
Like the Black House on Highway ninety-one.
Or, or even the Green House. What's that Green House by Meeks Pond? And the, you know, the big, huge home.
Oh, the guy has, uh, down off Holy Oak?
Oh, okay.
Um, you know what I'm saying? Where Meeks Pond, like the backside, that other block. I'm sorry, I don't know the block numbers. But there's that big, huge, beautiful green home that sold for millions of dollars recently. Or my favorite intersection, the White Home, the pickleball guy, who owns that big white house? And then across the way are, next to him is an apartment building of four units and across the way are six. That's really Parowan. It's the mix. I don't know if that's something that's feasible, that we divide the land or divide the potential city up and you say, "Okay, a certain percentage has to be," and it has to be in a different layout, so it's not just a row of townhomes. I don't know if that's something, but if you've ever heard of, come across...
Mixed juice. Dan, you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, you can, you can, you can get creative with your zoning. It would have to be something like that. Generally, the only way we do something like what Heather's describing now is a master plan zone and you have to have by definition a certain number of acres and it's a lot of acres. Um, this is what a lot of, uh, cities are doing where they're saying, "All right, bring us your plan." And they mix all kinds of things together and, and so forth. What we have is a patchwork of our zoning code. And the only way you could, you could do that, what, what Heather was talking about, is to either literally carve it up differently and, and, and add more vari- variability, variance within there, or create a new zone that allows you to do different things. The problem is, is where you have small parcels, every parcel's gonna have its own rights according to what zone it's in. And, um, it works if you had a very large parcel and they came in and said, "I have twenty acres and now I want to do," like, like this annexation where he's coming in right now, we just, last night with Planning Commission looked at it. He's asking for R three and R two and he has so much acreage. In fact, the owner of that land asked me, said, "I, what if I wanted to kind of mix things up and have different types of buildings and density and things like that?" And I said, "Well, the problem is you're not, with our current code, you, you're not large enough to be a, um, a master plan zone." So bas- basically, the only way you could do it would be to just kind of go through and rezone it. Or we could do a development agreement where we zone the entire thing R three, but then restrict you back to a density per development agreement. And I mentioned that we could do that with him as well, which is the way a lot of times cities do it in a smaller area. But that's us working with one large property owner. If you, if you have in the other areas where there's just part, stuff that's already out there, I don't know if most people realize, most of old Parowan is actually zoned R two. That banana color you see is R two.
Yeah, I didn't know that till the other day. I'm like, "Holy cow, we are full of R two."
It's completely full of R two and most of them are old houses and it's fine. But if they have enough acreage and want to, um, carve that out or if they wanted to put, put a duplex on there, that's all they could have done in the past in R two. Um, with this, they could, um, they could potentially do a twin home, but they'd have to subdivide the lot and do a twin home. But mostly, there's just lots there now and, and now you can do internal ADUs and external ADUs, so it's not that controversial now, but, yeah.
I mean, one of the things I appreciate about Parowan and have since I moved here, um, there isn't like a good side of town, bad side of town. You know, there isn't a, a lot of assumption based on which neighborhood you're from or any of that. I mean, we do have really good... I, I grew up in a city where it was, "Oh, you live on the east side of town." You know, I don't know if anyone else did, but it's, it's really awful and I do appreciate this. Why are you guys laughing down there?
Just because like, we were living in Parowan and someone's like, "Oh, you live in the ghetto side of..." Or not Parowan, in Cedar. "Oh, you live on the ghetto side of town." I don't feel like, um, Parowan has...
That's where I'm, that's where I'm from, Rochelle.
The ghetto side of town. I don't feel like Parowan has, has that.
You knew that.
Hey, I heard from longtime residents here, it was the east side and the west side of the street.
Oh, so I live in the ghetto then, huh?
Yep.
'Cause I'm on the west side.
Yep, Main Street divided it.
I'm in the ghetto.
Well, I fortunately haven't heard a lot of that talk.
Yeah, there was a stigmatism.
Okay, stigmatism for those keeping track of word, word choice. Um, so anyway, I think, uh, this is a great discussion. I love that everyone's sharing their viewpoints. I, it was the point I made, it, the state of the city is, this is a council with, uh, very diverse representation. Everyone has different circles, different contacts, but in the group, we talked to a lot of people and that's why I actually had someone today come in my office and say, "I bet you hate even seeing social media." And I said, "It's, it's the pulse. It's the heartbeat. I want to hear how people feel. I want to, you know, know what they're thinking." And, you know, I think that we all are very engaged in the community. I don't think there's a single person up here that people don't feel very open to coming and talking to you and talking about anything that they're concerned about. And, and so just to, to clarify, like, that was a big reason why. We recognized we needed to probably not stick with code as it was, um, because I had been told personally, "You, you're wide open." And I just, I didn't like the vulnerability of that, so, and, and, you know, we're open to suggestions, of course, always. I, I don't think we've ever said, "Oh, that's a terrible idea unless it, you know, is something harmful to another person." But, um, overall, I think we're doing really good work here. So I, I guess my big input to the council is really, really look closely at this and make sure there isn't anything else. I know there's been a lot of work put into this already, but we're also not in a hurry and we want to be sure we get this right. It's in effect at the moment, so, you know, whatever language you want to use. What did you, what did you say? I always say it's, things are kind of frozen right now or on hold on ice. And so we do have some time, but we also don't want to just go on and on and on with this if we're not being productive.
Especially when we have, we've got a lot out there and it's scary and...
And it's coming fast.
And it's coming and it's, we just can see what's coming and where it's zoned, yeah, I just, it freaks me out.
But I do think we're getting close.
I think so too.
So any, any, anything else before we move off of this agenda item because it is the last one other...
So do you want me to write the two versions of it or do you want to just bring it back as more discussion? You think you'll be ready to vote on it next time is what I'm asking?
Yeah, do two versions.
Okay.
And would it be appropriate if we made small changes where we wouldn't have to hold another public hearing?
Yeah, yep.
If they were like minor changes?
We've had, we've had so many...
I just want to be transparent and...
And, um, now two public hearings, um, but you can, if you have a public hearing, you can make minor changes afterwards. It's when you're changing something that's really a material thing and you haven't given a public a chance to have input on that thing. Now, if it's something that, that has been out there and then you just pick which way you want to go, it's different, but...
When you say substantive, substance, say the word for me.
Substantive?
Um, what delineates the substantive change versus just a subtle change?
Well, how big is big?
Okay, so those we probably...
I thought that, that, that the adding townhomes back in...
Was a big one.
After the entire discussion had been about removing them.
Mm-hmm.
If I was a member of the public and I assumed that townhomes weren't gonna be in and then I was like, "Okay, I'm comfortable with it" and I leave and then find out, "Oh, they added townhomes back in." Well, if I had known that, I would have said something. That's, that's when, there's something that you can kind of identify. You gotta give the public a chance to have input on that.
Well, hopefully they'll come next meeting and tell us how they feel.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. We're good to move on. So that is the last item as we tabled thirteen Legacy B Estates. So fourteen is reports, updates, and old business follow-up by elected officials and staff. And we will start with Councilmember Topham.
Well, I guess I could report on everything that we did in the state of the city because I kind of left it all out there, what we were doing with, um, the police trucks, all of the fire.
Oh, I should have asked, wait, before you guys walk out, Dr. Roth, will you grab him? Someone asked me to do this and I forgot. They said at the end of council meetings, I needed to start saying, "Those of you who are here tonight, was there anything that you came here specifically for and, or were you just here to just gather general information?" Okay, good to know. Okay, all right. Oh, all right.
You wanted a good picture?
Was that looking? Thank you. I didn't mean to call you back in, but I was told that actually that was, uh, good manners in a meeting and I want to have good manners. I want to be a good representation of Parowan, so, all right. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, I was just gonna say I don't really have anything new to report. Um, unless I go over, like, all of the trainings and things the fire department's been doing. There's been cleaning out, um, inventorying all of the trucks, seeing what they need, um, making a ton of progress down there. Um, Chief Cavallari is doing a fantastic job and I'm so glad that he's on our team and part of our, part of our team, so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have anything, but I thought, uh, Tuesday night, it was pretty, pretty good, you know? I wish more people would come. I mean, but I thought it turned out pretty nice.
Oh, yeah. Um, the only thing I actually accomplished, but it was very important, was a Zoom call with, uh, the library board this last week. So that was to, with the state of, uh, the state of Utah. We had to get training and, so that was good. That was service project next Monday for the high school, so excited for that too.
Do you want to tell them what the, kind of, the high school kids are gonna be doing this year for their service project?
Oh, okay, hold on.
So we get them for a day. I don't know, it's a tradition in Parowan. It's gone on forever. And they...
Daniel Day.
You multiply the hours and the number of kids and it's a lot of service and they're able to accomplish a lot. They did a lot of work at Meeks last year as well as the cemetery and...
And then the, I guess, elementary schools, you know?
Can I, I'm sorry, I left that out. I know, I, my time has passed. My three minutes is up. The elementary has also dedicated the week, uh, May twelfth through the sixteenth as, uh, Parowan Community Service. So all of the elementary kids, uh, will go out in classes and do different acts of service. I know, um, the first grade team is going down to Meeks Pond. It's gonna be doing some stuff down there. We've got a group of kids going out, um, on Holy Oak and picking up garbage along the fence and stuff. And I don't know what everybody else is doing, but those are the couple that I've heard so far. So they've dedicated that entire week to, um, cleaning up Parowan. That's great.
And then the senior high school, they start at twelve thirty. Um, ten of the students going up to, uh, the veterans' memorial to plant, uh, flowers and stuff and clean that all up. And, and then Heritage Park, ten students are gonna go there. And Parowan High School needs twenty students to clean up their, their area. And then everybody's gonna meet, all fifty, or forty to fifty students will be ending up at the cemetery at one thirty to, to, uh, clean that up also from Memorial. That's it.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks for coordinating that.
Well, somebody else.
Shout out to, shout out to Kristen Robinson.
Kristen Robinson, yeah. She's, yeah.
She's a doer.
She's a doer.
All right, Councilmember Downey. Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay.
I just thought Tuesday, uh, Tuesday night was great too. I think it was well attended for the weather that night. But like Councilman Harris said, that wish more people would come out when we do, 'cause I think it's great. There's more interaction too with the council people and to the residents.
Yep. We had good volunteer activity as a result too. We've already had some more volunteers reach out to want to help more. That's great, so good to interact in that formal way, but informal in that we were able to do question and answer and things. Councilmember Burton.
Hey, planning zoning met last night and has discussed, they, they addressed the Prime West Develop Annexation and there'll be a hearing, public hearing on the twenty-first of May concerning that where they'll have that hearing and then they'll make a recommendation to the council after that. They also discussed in planning zoning about short-term rental code. Uh, they'd had discussions, they tabled it for further discussion. And it's, we met with the U Water Rest, um, Recharge Project yesterday morning also and there was a couple of good things that's come out of it. The, one of the easements has been secured and worked out, the right-of-way easements and, for the pipeline. And the crossing of Three, uh, Three Hundred East and the Center Streets has been worked out with UDOT, which was a, a big, huge achievement. And the, the bids are out on the pipeline and the, uh, bids will go out on the diversion project shortly. And so hopefully we'll see some dirt turnings shortly and see that project come to fruition, so. I mean, I'm excited, Dan, about it. Very excited, so, um... I don't know. I'm so tired, I can't even think hardly, so, but I think that is all that we, that I, the meetings as far as to report on.
Right.
I'm also exhausted from all the ding, ding, dings today until my phone went dead.
Amen.
Thank you. All right.
You were the cause of a few of those dings, Dave.
Well, I don't have, I don't have service all the time, so, anyway.
Please remove me from this group message is basically where we almost...
Trying to coordinate a...
I silenced the...
A meeting.
Yeah.
Um...
It was just trying to get, don't worry, we weren't doing anything. We shouldn't. We were just trying to get a date pinpointed, a schedule pinpointed for budget.
My turn?
Your turn.
So technically con, cons, some construction has started. Um, if you'll notice on Three Hundred South, the property on, the poor property owners there that we have been impacting already, we've, we've, Enbridge Gases had to move their gas line out of the way. Um, and so there was a little bit of a hubbub about that. There was a large, beautiful pine tree that, it was in the right-of-way and the gas company had to go right through. There's just no space there. And they are working, they should be wrapping up within the next couple of days. They did actually have, while they were doing that, they had to run a couple of new lines and meters on homes. So it was a good thing, get the gas, get the gas out of the way, which will allow us to move forward with construction on our pipeline.
Where was that exactly?
Three Hundred South between the bridge and Two Hundred East.
Okay.
So if you go over there, they've, they've had the road closed to local traffic and they've been in there working. I, I feel bad for the residents that live on Three Hundred South. Th- this is gonna be a rough summer. Um, but it, it's absolutely critical and we'll be working with them to give them information as much as we can as that happens. Um, if, if you're wondering, everybody's aware that we're getting two terribles. Um, the one that started first is still not been started. And of course, the one that was started second is, um, buildings are, are rising from the, from the, the construction rubble. You see all the cones out there, they are actually boring under Main Street for utilities. And, um, per UDOT requirements, they have to have a traffic management plan and, and put cones. Um, I've been on them about keeping the road clean because they're working in mud and things like that. But the other terribles went through a redesign, just a relay out of their, of the site plan. Nothing fun, no, nothing has changed in terms of what's going in. They're still doing the, uh, the gas station, they're still doing a separate restaurant, Starbucks, question mark? Who knows, that's what they found their plan and they've been trying to get that, um, um, franchise. Don't know if it'll be a Starbucks or not, but, so, nothing changes what's going in, they just had to rearrange it a little bit. So, we've been through civic review and that just wrapped up yesterday. So, they will be getting their building permit and starting construction out there as well. Of course, everybody's seen the Maverick that is under construction. Um, um, there is a subdivision that's in process, a small subdivision. It is just a standard R-one type subdivision that will be completely unaffected by anything that rural done right would change. It has been going through its cycles in the subdivision review committee. It is located right here, where my mouse is. It's that blank area that's surrounded by Stillwater and Maple Springs. Um, it has a public hearing in City Count, or in Planning Commission next time, two weeks from yesterday. Um, it's an administrative process with this, that won't come to the City Council. Um, I'm just telling everybody because, just being transparent, that is going through, they, they've finished their cycles with the subdivision review committee. It's very simple, there's been some rumors going around that it's manufactured homes or R-three. It's just a standard R-one subdivision with larger homes. In fact, each home will have an RV garage on it. And it should fit right in the character of the neighborhood completely surrounding it. So, anyways, just making the council aware of that. It, they, they're calling it the eighteen fifty-one subdivision. That's the name, eighteen fifty-one subdivision, so. Isn't that a show on TV right now? I, they must be their favorite show, I guess, I have no idea.
It's the year...
That's the year Parowan was settled.
Oh, my gosh, what's the show, sorry, what's the show on TV though?
Twenty-two.
Wow.
What's the show, eighteen twenty-three? I know that Parowan was founded in eighteen fifty-one, for the record, I talk about it all the time.
January thirteenth.
It's okay, Dan, we know you were just kidding.
I'm also tired.
Yes, Par- Parley P. Pratt was here the year before.
It's been a long week.
There it is.
Um...
It's not a meeting without Parley P. Pratt.
Pickleball structures have been, I referred to eighteen fifty-one in the thing on Tuesday, like, you know I know it.
Yeah, and it was, it was Parley P. Pratt, not Brigham Young, my great-great-grandfather.
Brigham Young is funnier when you're making a joke.
Okay.
Pickleball structures are, um, being constructed, being finished right now. If you look at, um, if you drive by there, Public Works is finishing those, they're also, what's that? The shade structures. They're also continuing to work on the pump track, um, and, and it's going along, there's, there's a planned opening of that, which we've talked about. Um, water projects, there was a, a new law that was passed, um, this one almost passed our radar. We have to have all of the next, all of the water projects, you ready for this? In the next twenty years, we have to get to the state by tomorrow. The state is combining Division of Drinking Water, Division of Water Quality, they're combining all their divisions into one entity for management and, and the loaning and grant of money. Into one entity. And in doing that, they're creating what's called a state water plan. And that state water plan is not just what the state is doing, but what all of the subdivisions, political subdivisions within the state are doing. Because the fu- funding for majority of those projects goes through the state. They, with this bill that passed, it, it will allow for the state to collect a fee from our water customers. And it will partially fund this thing and then, of course, we can apply for money. Um, it, I did not know that we had to get them a list. It was, luckily, we got an email from Five County Association of Governments, which, that's what they do, is help us with these things. Um, the, interestingly, the entity that is doing the state water plan that was awarded the contract is Bowen Collins, who has, we worked with, who did our water plan and all of that. Kudos to us for having just done our water plan and our sewer plan. By the way, it's all water, culinary water, secondary water, wastewater, translation sewer, storm water.
Water development.
It's everything but dam safety is rolled into this one entity now. And we have to tell them all of our projects within the next twenty years. So, luckily, like I said, we just updated all of our plans and so, we have a list of these things. And it will be a living document that they will allow projects to be added to every year. However, they said, "If you're going to be applying for funding anytime in the next year or two, you better be on this list." So, we have our list completed, it hasn't been submitted. Aldo and I are reviewing it again tomorrow and will submit it. Um, by the way, two weeks ago, we actually put our application into Division of Drinking Water and it'll be in process before these all start combining for what's on our capital project plans, which we've been talking about, the, the, um...
Spring.
Spring, um...
Recharge.
Um, no, 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 the, uh...
The water treatment.
The water treatment to bring our springs back online. We also added to the, the request, um, essentially, we'll be doing a bond and we'll be improving some of the, the water lines, which will help fire flow in some of the areas of town. We know we have fire flow issues and a few things are on this, one borrowing, so...
And they accepted that application and signed us, a person to work with us on it.
Long before we get to...
In front of all these other...
Actually borrowing money or anything like that, it'll come to council. But we had a deadline to have our application in and we wanted to be ahead of this process. We wanted to be in process before they get into the new process, right?
Isn't that the one Aldo did?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, Aldo, Aldo, um, did a great job putting that together. Um, the pool...
They accepted our application and I thought that meant we got it.
Oh, no, no, no.
Like, no, it just means they accepted our application.
No, we'll have to go in front of the board and talk about our projects and all that stuff.
I thought that was crazy if it happened, but it didn't.
And by the way, interestingly enough, they're not including CIB in this process.
Oh, really?
CIB is separate. CIB hasn't likely lately liked doing utility projects. They've been so lowly funded, I keep using the wrong words. They have been so minimally funded that they have basically said, "If it's a water project, go over there. We don't have money to loan on water projects." So, CIB is what we're getting ready to go to for the library remodel and, and we'll continue to use CIB for non-water projects, so. Um, everybody may have noticed, the pool has been replastered and is now full of water. Woo! Um, we are on target for opening, um, we filled it earlier than normal this year because of the plastering, because we want to do our own lifeguard testing in our own pool. And also, Shelby was going to work with the school district to hold some of their PE classes at the end of the year. Um, also, she talked to the mayor night today about possibly, once the pool is ready and the heater is on, which the heater's not going to be on for another little bit, maybe even renting out the pool in the evenings if we can get the lifeguard coverage and get some revenue coming in. We're not going to open it to public swim until the kids are out of school, there's just not the demand for everyday open. But the plan is to open to the public the Saturday of Memorial Day, Memorial Weekend, and have the Free Swim Day, which is historical tradition, on Labor, on Memorial Day. And Councilman Dean's going to cook free hot dogs. So, it's a special event.
Okay, Hot Dog Day.
So, free hot dogs and Free Swim Day on Memorial Day and it will open to the public the Saturday prior. Um, we're also, um, going to be building the shade structure, which was a part of going over the, that wall to separate the, the food court from the, from the area. That was part of that thing that we had, we hoped that we had enough money after we plastered. We got such a favorable bid on the plaster that we went ahead and, and got that. And we will have the concession stand open. However, we are still in the process of doing everything to get ready for it. Um, we just barely had all the electrical done, we'll be in there doing all of the painting that's required by the health department. Um, we're putting together all the equipment. Um, making a, an administrative judgment call, rather than put it out to bid just yet, I think what we'll do is we'll just sell completely prepackaged food, which we don't have to have all of the food handlers permits and all that stuff. If it's completely pre, pre, um, packaged, we can sell soda cans and, and water bottles and candy bars and stuff, as long as it's prefak- and, and that way, we can kind of work out the kinks with the, uh, with the concession stand, get it kind of dialed in and whether we put it out to bid mid-year or wait till next year, or we put it out to bid next year and, this, in the middle of the year for the following year. We can get an idea of what sells there, what...
We're going to do some food, food, it's not just going to be candy and soda.
No, 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 yeah, but it has to all be prepackaged.
Right.
Unless we go through the process to get our own, um, outlet per- permit and have everybody that's going to be in there licensed as food handlers. We don't have to do that as long as we stay completely pre, prepackaged. So, anyways, we'll be working through that, but we will be...
But if you were to contract that, you wouldn't have to tap.
They would have to worry about it.
Right.
We just need to get the facility, we just need to get it open and kind of get it all figured out. I, I, I don't want to have a, a concessionaire in there frustrated because they don't have this or they don't have that. And so, this will allow us to ease into it anyways. That was a judgment call. If you guys hate that idea, then we can hurry and go out to RFP, but...
Otter Pops.
That's all I got.
That's important, that's it? Okay, so, the, I'm going to be quick. We had, you know, like Dan said, we had our meeting this week with the transportation and also the Coordinating Council of Governments. I just want to assure you, we are attending all these meetings that are really important for Parowan to be in the forefront with our projects and the needs and collaborative and that. And, you know, Senator Vickers shows up to those, um, Cindy Bullock for Celeste Malloy sho- shows up to those, either in person or online. Um, we've got just really good, um, support and people that want to help us with things. And so, it's just good to be there and good to know that we're working well together with the agencies and people that, um, can do things to help us. The other thing is, it's, so, I'll just read this really quick, but, "The first shots of the American Revolutionary War, War were fired almost exactly two hundred and fifty years ago at Lexington and Concord on April nineteen seventeen seventy-five. The experiment of a representative democratic style of government has withstood the test of time and the United States of America continues to stand as a beacon of freedom and liberty to the world. Um, our nation has survived a civil war, multiple world wars, depressions, recessions, and societal crisis. We are a hub of innovation and our economic dominance fueled by free market capitalism has lifted hundreds of millions of people around the world out of poverty. Even with our shortcomings and struggles, we are fortunate to wake up every morning as citizens of the greatest country in the world. America is worth celebrating." So, we as a state are celebrating America, um, in twenty twenty-six. Each of our cities have been asked to participate and do something special for this and there are going to even be funds available for our cities to do things. Um, both Dan and I are on a committee that is helping figure this out for Iron County, but, um, really neat ideas came out of our first meeting, but one of them that I really liked, so, um, the mayor of Washington, Crest Daily, they changed their logo for their city to red, white, and blue for the year. It'll be the whole year of twenty twenty-six, it's cool. Um, Scott Phillips is the chair of that with Maria Twitchell. So, he asked, uh, when I brought this to him and said, "Maybe we should see if all the cities want to do that," he asked me to bring it to Coordinated Council of Governments. So, Enoch did theirs already, which I thought was really cool. So, we're going to do Parowans for the year, so it'll be red, white, and blue with the Old Rock Church and I just think it's cool. But there, there are going to be some really neat things. I talked to Jamie Evans and said, "Could we make something about, you know, freedom or America or proud to be American, an American for our Iron County Fair theme for twenty twenty-six?" So, we just have a lot of good things happening. So, if you have ideas of things we can do, one of the ones I had is a quilt, um, quilt display all based on Americana, red, white, and blue. Maybe pictures of Ameri- the American flag because those are beautiful and that would get photographers looking for beautiful flags around, you know, everywhere. And then, we erected a new flag at our pool and the other idea I had is to have a few new flags in public places throughout the county. So, there, you know, just we're on this and it's cool and I love it and so, I wanted to share that with you for your ideas. Other than that, um...
Do you need a closed session?
No.
Yeah.
You do?
Yep.
Holy...
It'll be quick.
Sorry to those of you I didn't tell the truth to, I didn't know.
Sorry, I, I thought I'd made...
Mayor, may I just add something, because you reminded me.
Okay.
Today is, commemorates the end of Second, Second World War, this date. So, this is the, this commemoration.
That was called Victory Day?
Yeah, Victory Day or something today, yep. And...
I was there.
On that line, I just want everybody to look at the veterans' monument, it's lit. Take note of that, it looks good, and the cemetery wall's in progress.
Yep. Scott, I don't know why, I was trying, legal, Scott, I never know what to formally esquire. What would you like to be called?
If you said esquire, you're the wrong one. Um, thanks, kudos to our city recorder, that was a lot of minutes, they're excellent, thank you. And to our city manager, a lot of work into rural done right and he amazes me that, uh, a lot of people say I take no pride in authorship, but, uh, a lot of people get ruffled when you spend that much time drafting something and, and then it doesn't just get passed. And he, uh, his equanimity in those circumstances is excellent. Uh, we have a new pope for the first time on the heels of historic events, who is an American, never been an American, uh, pope of that church. And just finally, many of you may know this, but Dave and I were here in eighteen fifty when Parley P. Pratt came here. Brigham was not here, was he?
That's right, it was Parley P. Pratt. Brigham just cast us aside, send us south, so...
Right, remember that?
Told us not to come back.
I thought that was called a mission or something.
I thought, uh, yeah.
Thank you. Callie? Well, now I have to add my, since you did, you both did your thing. My son is buying his first home, he's in Virginia, and believe it or not, he got a brick with a slate roof with four bedrooms, two bathrooms for two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. And he called me with his closing statement, he's like, "Mom, it's meant to be." I was like, "How do you know?" And he goes, "We just got what our payment's going to be, it's eighteen fifty-one."
Why, why is that significant? I don't, I don't get it.
I'm not sure either, can you explain that to me?
And that isn't a show, Dan.
There's a show right now, it's eighteen twenty-three.
So, with that...
Nineteen twenty-three, nineteen, yeah, spin-off of Yellowstone, yeah.
Thank you for coming out tonight, we appreciate you here, it means a lot for you to share your time and ideas with us. So, now we just need a motion to go into closed session and a roll call vote. Mayor, I move to go into closed session to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or sale of real property.
I second it.
Okay, roll call, Rochelle?
Uh, Councilmember Rochelle Topham, aye. Good night, thank you.
David Harris, aye.
John Dean, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
David Burton, aye.
All right, thank you.